Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting on Tuesday, February nineteenth. What is it, February? I got the wrong date altogether.
March.
Holy mackerel. March nineteenth, twenty nineteen. At this time, we'd like to call up Pastor Jonathan Clem from Jericho Way's ministry. Thank you, Jonathan, for being here, and we'll have him say the invocation, after which we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Rich Vidiello. If you'd all please rise.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we call upon you right now. Most gracious God, watch over this city. We speak blessing over the land, blessing over the mayor and the council members. We speak blessing over the people. We speak blessing over the businesses that represent us here, the Electrical District Number Three, and the Global Water, and so many others. We thank you, God, for the people that have come here from all parts of the country, Canada, and around the world. We thank you that you've made this a conglomeration of wonderful people. We pray for your peace, and your honor, and your dignity to be in this land, in this city. We pray favor whenever the mayor goes to speak and tries to get Highway three forty-seven widened, and tries to get favor over the different contracts with the different cities, and state, and federal government funds. We thank you, God, for this city, and we ask that you would make, give us a real identity, a place where people really want to be, a place of honor, a place of love, and a place of dignity. We thank you for your blessing tonight in this meeting, and we pray your blessing on everything that is said and done, and may we live in peace, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of West Sanes, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor Jonathan. We appreciate it. And yes, we will always need divine intervention on the three forty-seven, so thank you very much. With that, we'll move to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Vitiello?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. That'll take us to Proclamation of Knowledge and Awards. We have nothing in that item to check tonight, so that'll take us to the report from the mayor. Council, I wanted to give you a few minutes. Again, we're going to have to come back to this, and I just haven't had the time to get to it yet, but need to figure out a new way to structure this as far as an agenda. But I wanted to see if there was anything that you wanted pulled from consent. I saw Councilmember Smith first, and then Vice Mayor. So, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. The two things that I thought were super exciting this past month, number one was the Copa Film Festival. I don't know if Shelley's, if she's in the audience. What a fabulous event. I was there the whole day on Sunday and saw, I think, probably ninety percent of the films. What talent is coming to this film festival? And so, if you are a film lover, and you like unique new ideas and concepts shared via film, this is something you've got to put on your calendar for next year. A delightful experience, and Shelley, job well done. Just really amazing that we have something like this in the city of Maricopa. Yeah. Give her a hand. And I hope that attendance next year is quadrupled, if not more. It'd be very exciting. Second thing is, I had the opportunity to judge at our state DECA contest. And if you don't know, DECA is an organization from our Maricopa High School. It's actually a national organization that teaches young people how to market, how to be specialists in hospitality, and a whole host of different talents. And it was really exciting to go to this event, that it's a state event, and listen to teams. I was able to judge the teams, and listen to them present ideas spontaneously. They get thirty minutes to put together a concept or a problem, and it was just hugely delightful. And we have some really, really smart kids, not only in the city of Maricopa, but in the state of Arizona. Fascinating. And so, what a wonderful event. And that type of judging is open to the public, and so if you specialize in hospitality, or hotels, or marketing, any type of business-related category, you can volunteer as well to be a judge at the DECA contest, and you will be amazed at the talent. So, a delightful event, and it was my first time, and I just really loved it, and encourage people to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of things as well. Attendance of the American Legion Pulse One Thirty-Three. Got the opportunity to participate, to observe Copa Shorts at PAC and over at City Hall. And I agree with Councilmember Smith. It is an outstanding program, and I'm hopeful that we will be able to increase the attendance a hundredfold. It is, it's being missed by the community, I think. And I think if you have an opportunity to participate and watch what happens, you'll see a class program presented to the community in a very classic way. MUSD conducted a local partners luncheon on March first, and that's, I think, in keeping with Dr. Lopman's plan to make sure that MUSD and the city have a connected relationship, and I think it's really important that that happens and to continue. And that's one of the ways to make that happen is by that outreach. We had an opportunity to participate in the Against Abuse Gala, which was a seventies theme. Saw a lot of characters there, interesting content or costumes. And so, but I thought it was a, it was a very great event, and hopefully it raised some funds, and more importantly, raised some awareness. I know someone's going to talk about that a little bit later. I had a chance to judge the Mr. Maricopa High School pageant, and that was a lot of fun. That was on the eighth, and it was great. It was about fifteen guys, and they went through different, went through talent, speech. They had swimsuit contests, and it was, it was really good. The young man that won was very good, so it was good to see. And I had an opportunity to represent not only Maricopa, but the state of Arizona in the Arizona rodeo, Black Rodeo, which happened here last, a couple weeks ago, and I was a grand marshal for that rodeo. And I thought that was a lot, it was a lot of fun, good activity. Hopefully, there are a lot of people there from Maricopa. At least there's a lot of people cheering, so I don't know if it was just because I was in the back of a truck or something, but there's a lot of people there. Attended the Maricopa Music Festival, which was a local, local developed and managed community outreach for veterans with PTSD. And I don't want to talk too much, because I think perhaps that might be raised again, but I just want to make sure that not only was the event there, but we were also recognized for community service, and I thought that that was great, put on by Crystal and John, Old John. And then, I don't know if you're going to talk about NLC, but a number of us attended the National League of Cities and states, or cities and towns, and I think I'll back off of that and let the mayor talk a little bit more about that. We did get an opportunity to get a legislative briefing, and so it was very good. And then finally, the last thing I want to talk about was a bowling tournament and for a program called Keep Teachers' Teaching, which you're seeing on the, on the agenda for today. And I just want to talk a little bit about, we are being asked to support this organization if they are in fact given a grant from the Occhin community. And I just want to briefly talk about the narrative for this organization. So, Keep Teachers' Teaching was founded in 2015 by a gentleman by the name of Darryl Gooden. Darryl was inspired to help teachers due to his experience as an African-American male in Mississippi. Without teachers guiding and inspiring him to do more when he was growing up, he would have just been another statistic. So, he sought to give back to the people that enabled and supported him throughout his life and career. And so, he developed an organization called Keep Teachers' Teaching, where he comes out of his pocket to support teachers who come out of their pocket to supply their classrooms and help the students, and to be a positive force in the classroom. So, I just wanted to, when you see that, you have a kind of an understanding of what that Keep Teachers' Teaching was. He had an excellent fundraiser over at UltraStar, got a chance to talk to the teachers, and you know, you're roomful of teachers. You try to make sure that your grammar is correct, and if you're giving statistics, that the statistics, because the English department and the math department are paying close attention to what you're saying. So, but it was, it was great. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll shut up.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Vidiello?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to report briefly. As Vice Mayor mentioned, many of us have gone to Washington, DC, the past two weeks to be with our representatives in Congress, and also attend a number of the workshops sponsored by the National League of Cities. There were several interesting workshops, but the one that night, I think, is most germane to this city, was this workshop on Census. Now, April first of next year will be Census Day, and there'll be a lot of discussion about that. And what is happening now is in the US Supreme Court, the question is whether that Secretary of Commerce, Wilbur Ross, will be prevailed, because for the first time in history since seventeen ninety, there's a question on the census form that has never been there before, namely, are you a citizen? And of course, many people are very much opposed to that, both Republicans and Democrats, but the administration wanted to go along with that, and it's now the Supreme Court. We don't know how it's going to be ruled. They'll probably make their decision when they adjourn, which is normally in July. We hope that they will rule against that, because it will prevent thousands, if not millions of citizens, being counted, especially true in states with have a large migrant population. We know it's true. Secretary of State Thomas Jefferson, seventeen ninety, was the first one that sponsors Census telling. And as I mentioned, April first will be the beginning of the Census next year, with the follow-ups from May to August. So, it's essential for you, everyone that's in your household, and those that you know, to be sure that you've signed that form, and if follow-ups come to your home, be sure to share with them the truth. It is extremely important that this state get its fair share, and this city get its fair share of revenue. There are other workshops I attended, Mr. Mayor, but I'll leave that to you in terms of speaking about the meetings that you're attending. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vidiello?
So, people ask me, you know, how do I like being on council? I love it. I love working with everybody here. I love working with the staff. It's been busy. It's been very busy. So, running for election may be one thing, but I'm telling you, working on City Council is a whole ballgame, so be careful what you wish for. Anyway, I would give it up to the world. But on February twentieth, I got to meet with the mayor and about twenty twenty-five seniors at McDonald's, and we spent about two hours talking about lots of things, and things they didn't know. They were glad to have us there. And again, we spent two hours, and Chris, you can go over a little bit of the guest, but it was amazing to have twenty people, twenty-five people ask us questions for two straight hours, and it was great. March first, I attended my first CABC, it's a community group, to bring businesses here to Arizona, and we specifically look forward to them bringing businesses here. I also got, on that same night, I got to go to the Heritage Academy, groundbreaking grade six through twelve, so it's an eighth-grade school, charter school that's coming here. Then on March fifth, I left for, again, the NLC with the mayor, joining my colleagues there. It was amazing to be sitting in front of our Congressmen and senators, and they were all great men and women. They were fantastic. Sit and listen, and they actually listened a little bit, and that's, that's a great thing. So, unfortunately, I came down with a little bit of a thing called shingles, and it took me out for a day or two, but then I got back up and joined my colleagues in pain, but with them. So, that was a great thing. And then on March sixteenth, I was able to, I was part of American Legion Tournament that Julie put on, softball type thing. And we had seventeen show up. We only won six, but I proved ball, and we made a few extra hundred bucks. And we had seventeen, it was an old day affair, and turned out to be fantastic. I want to thank everybody who showed up and donated, the teams, and thank Julie for putting on a great tournament. We look forward to doing it. It was their hundredth year, so it was very important to show up at this and be a part of it, and I was very proud to be. Other than that, I'm sure the mayor has a few things he's going to talk to you about, and all yours. Thank you.
Councilmembers, sorry, Councilmember Gussi?
I just wanted to mention, thank you, Rich. It was very essential, your collaboration was essential. This is the hundredth anniversary of American Legion. It's also the tenth anniversary for the Maricopa American Legion. So, we've been here in Maricopa for ten years. So, it was exciting to have the event. I just wanted to mention, too, that I attended the Sesa Chavez-Ponau Foundation Scholarship Event. We actually awarded two Maricopa High School students scholarships, a thousand-dollar scholarships, for this, during this event. Also, the inaugural event to commemorate Women's History Month. It's a signature event, and there's going to be some people speaking about it later on today, but I just wanted to mention that this June, we will celebrate a hundred years of the Nineteenth Amendment, of the women's right to vote. So, it's essential that we have been given the right to vote, and you have two women representing the council, and it's exciting to see how a hundred years could go by so fast. But thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Councilmember Freddie says no. No one had anything to pull from consent? Okay, off we go. In essence of time here, I won't repeat anything that's been said. Had the opportunity to attend many of the things that the council members did, and it was a wonderful event. You have a very active council, and that's something to be very proud of. Just wanted to make you all aware, the three forty-seven scoping study kicked off this week. That's a really important deal. One of the things that I've told you about for many, many months now, and even years, is the fact that, you know, it's not rocket science to figure out what we need. What the rocket science is, is in figuring out how to do it, and then more importantly, how to fund it. And so, if you don't know what the plan is, and what the needs are, and, you know, where the hangups are, then you don't know what funding you need to fix those problems. And so, you know, people will say to me all the time, well, if we just fix this one piece, and I think, oh, that's great, but then it shoves all the problem to the next problem. And so, you have to fix everything or fix nothing. And so, the scoping study is really important. It'll give us all that information, and then we can move towards the next greater steps of figuring out how to fund it. So, that, just to give you some guidance there, that, that plan can go for approximately eighteen months, but we hope to have it done in December, in twelve months, and so that will help put us into the path of getting funding aligned, and that's a big deal. So, there's also been some stuff made, a big deal of, is that, just so you, again, behind the scenes catch up, we are working very closely with Gila River and Occhin, and while they weren't able to attend this initial launch meeting, they've been, we've been in close contact. We're also holding special outreach meetings to them directly and with them. So, we want to make sure that they are apprised and are aware at every step of the process, because it's going to take a collective group effort to make this work. And so, clearly, Gila River is a key partner here, but so is Occhin, and I talked with the governor of Gila River and the chairman of Occhin on a regular basis on this issue. So, just want to keep you apprised there, and that's a huge step in the right direction. salsa festival is this Saturday, so hopefully you'll all be able to come to attend that. It's a lot of fun. There should be information out there on this event, and so you can go to the website and find out more about that. And then, again, just in the nature of brevity, every year we make a, it's kind of a routine pilgrimage to Washington, DC, and people oftentimes ask me, why do you go, and what is the value in that? And, you know, I tell them that, you know, what I've learned since, since sitting in this seat is that the value of making the relationships with those that are our congressional representatives is second to none. And in fact, it's one of the most important things we can do. And the reason I say that is that so many of the problems that are here in Maricopa, floodplain issues, transportation, things that deal on a national level, require national help. It requires national funding. I-11, three forty-seven, you know, the east-south, east-west corridor, those types of things. All of those require federal help. And if we want to make those processes more smooth, if we want to make them faster, if we want to accomplish them in a more timely fashion, rather than waiting for them to organically happen, then the way to do it is to go to the decision-makers and have them on board every step of the way, so that they know where to help us, they know where to apply pressure, and they know what to do on our behalf. And I will tell you that Republicans and Democrats alike, when we talk on these issues that I just mentioned to you, are very, very on board with the city of Maricopa. They are very much apt to help us and to move our issues forward. We are trying to get legislation sponsored to bypass the secondary study requirement in the federal law to deal with I-11, which will speed up that. And again, you've heard me say this many times, but right now, the freeways through the Port of Mary Posa in Nogales end up bringing about ten billion dollars. I've heard the Port Authority testify that if that I-11 was in place, while it's very expensive, would probably push between fifty and sixty billion dollars worth of commerce to the state of Arizona. I don't know about you, but that's a massive increase, and that's, that's a rising tide raises all ships. So, these are the types of things that we are trying to spearhead, and while it's interesting to think that little Maricopa is the one doing this on a federal level, it's a wonderful praise to us when we meet with our senators, with our Congress folks, and they tell us, you know, we not only expect to see you here, but we, we anticipate it, and we're working with you to accomplish it. So, it's a big deal. Also, I had the opportunity then to, after that particular trip, we spent a couple days, what we call the Hill, right, on Capitol Hill, and meeting with them, and kind of a speed dating sort of mentality. We just, you know, our, our folks there are always scheduling these appointments and trying to kill us on these death marches all over Capitol Hill, and it's a lot of fun, but at the same time, your feet will be hurt at the end of the day, and, you know, your voice doesn't work anymore, because you've talked so many times, and it's, it's a great opportunity. But with that, we also couple it with a, with a conference that we need to be at, where we learn about national issues that we can help bring back to the city, and hopefully not reinvent the wheel, but make the city a little bit better. I had the opportunity to attend several of the breakout sessions on transportation issues, also immigration, which I think affects the state of Arizona very heavily, and also Supreme Court cases. You know, these were fascinating reviews and treatises on how and why all of these things apply, how they apply nationwide, and then boiled down into the state, and ultimately to the city in which we live, and how this, how this makes a difference to us. And so, that networking with other, other cities and towns, and what they do, and how they've done it, really helps us kind of learn the best practices, bring that back, and hopefully institute them here, so that we're not making the same mistakes others have made, and hopefully to navigate these tricky issues of the day a little bit better. So, with that, I know that we don't have a report from the city manager, so I'll move quickly to the call to the public. Thank you very much for your attention this evening. I'll go through the call to the public. I ask that you stick to the three-minute timetable, as we have a lot to get to. So, with that, to call up, in no particular order, Stacy Vanadale, if you please come on up.
Did you take a speed, a speed talking class?
Okay. Would you press that button? There's a little button that turns green when you press it.
Can't see the button pusher.
Perfect. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. I just wanted to announce to the public that tomorrow evening, we are going to be having our first annual, hopefully, and a nine-year-old Women on the Verge of Greatness Conference. We anticipate having a little over a hundred members of the community and esteemed speakers that are, we're going to mix and mingle for about thirty minutes tomorrow evening, have some food, have a DJ, have some other fun events going on, and then from six-thirty to about eight o'clock, we're going to have speakers, and we're going to be talking about faith, hope, and love, and hope to inspire the community, and introduce everybody to our new 501(c)(3) that is going to support other women's advocacy organizations and do some additional work out in the city. With that, I'll turn it over. Can I turn it over to Gail Ramblin to talk about our next event that's coming up?
Absolutely.
Hello, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council. We also wanted to tell you guys that we're going to do free prom dresses. I'm here representing Families First, CDC, that has done this for the last six years. They've always had a prom dress drive, giving away dresses to young ladies that just want to make their dreams special. So, this year, Families First is going to join with Stacy's group, Women on the Verge, and also there is a photographer, Eliana Kilm, that has speechless reflection photography, and all three groups this year are going to get together and make girl magic. So, this Friday, we're going to be turning Stacy's office into a, into a clothes closet. We're going to make the office amazing, and young women can come from one to eight on Friday and participate in the, in the free prom dresses. We've also have some people that are donating corsages. We have a couple of folks that are going to do makeup for the prom, and this is going to sponsor MHS students halfway. And we've also been asked to do the special needs prom over at the high school. So, we're very excited. So, whatever you guys can do to help support us. So, right now, what you can do is, we have dresses, we have over four hundred dresses. People have been dropping off dresses during the week. We're a little bit short on clothing racks. We probably need about six more. And whatever you can do, we're going to be setting up the dressing room at eight in the morning on Friday. And I have some young adults putting it on Snapchat, social media, and we're really excited about it. So, whatever you can do to spread the word, we'd appreciate it. Shoes, jewelry, again, we have hairdos and makeup. Go prom! Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Tori Anderson?
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Wade, Council. I just, I'm here on behalf of Against Abuse Incorporated. I'm just here to say thanks, because we had a phenomenal disco night. The gala was a huge success. Those of you who weren't there, you can put it on your calendar for next year. It'll be a different theme, but we were able to raise over thirty-five thousand dollars for our event. We have an amazing community, and I'm very proud to be a lifelong resident of the city of Maricopa, and even before it was a city. So, it's, I know what amazing community members we have, and I'm grateful for your service, and for your leadership, and for all that you do to help nonprofits like Against Abuse continue to service victims and families within the city of Maricopa. I want to share just a couple quick statistics. Against Abuse was fourth in the state, the entire state of Arizona, for mobile services provided, and that's our outreach with our advocates. And so, it's not just shelter services. We provide all kinds of, a huge wagon wheel of services. And then we were fifth in the state for our domestic violence emergency shelters. That's pretty huge, considering how large our state is. Our advocates work tirelessly. They don't make the big bucks, but we're in it for the passion, and for the fact that we're making our community stronger and better. And I appreciate your support in that vision. I'm excited for the future. Against Abuse is very fortunate to be in the city of Maricopa and in Ponau County, and our families are better, because we're all working together, and I really appreciate the partnerships that we have. So, I just wanted to say thanks. Appreciate it.
Shelley Gillespie?
Down so I can be heard. Thank you, Council, Mayor, staff, and citizens and friends. I'm grateful and beyond words, so thrilled that everyone was involved. I want to thank the mayor for his very talented emceeing and his general support. City manager Horst, who saw potential in his second week on the job, said, you've got it, you're here. And that was a wonderful feeling to be supported. From Councilmember Manfredi, who said, sure, you should be here at the city council. Office is, why not? Yeah. And Nancy Smith, who's been tireless- And Nancy Smith, who's been a tireless campaigner on our behalf as well, and everyone else here, who is able to be involved and help, and just even say a few words of support. We have so many people that have worked hard, and will be doing something, we hope, at the school too, because we were very fortunate to have the help of quite a number of DECA members, as well as National Honor Society from the high school. And one young woman, who worked for over 20 hours for us over the weekend, we're going to offer a special recognition for her. But we've been so grateful for everybody's involvement, and I wanted to give an example, because our mission is to help youth and people to feel good about themselves through the medium of film. And one young man exemplified, over the course of the weekend, what we were looking for. When he started in middle school, there wasn't really anything much to do, but he was, his attention was caught by film, and he did a film that we awarded a degree. This is the third time that he's been involved, and he went beyond and above. He offered to be the test dummy for the expert makeup artist, and he let himself get sick-looking, battered-looking, and really bruised. He looked like he'd been through a lot in the course of just a half hour, as the makeup artist layered all these things on him. He really loved it. He also helped us in doing, right here, a table read of the screenplay that wound up being part of our films that were shown. So, he has done so much for the film world here, that he actually started a film club at the high school, because there wasn't one, and he did a PSA that I saw him planning for. They submitted it to a national contest. It was one of four high schools that won, and the $2,000 they won came back to the high school. So, he's been, his name's Caden Rogers. He's been a very stellar support for why we're doing this, that some youth can see the promise in it, and of course, we provided a fun event for the city. But we were so thrilled that his movie-making has led to these kind of good things for the community in general. So, thank you all very much for what you've done. We really appreciate this, and we will keep going, and we'll have a new announcement about next year's soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Kim Vandenberg.
Good evening, Mayor Price and Council members. My name is Kim Vandenberg, and I'm the team lead for the Wall that Heals, Penalt County. The Wall that Heals recently visited Penalt County, and we're very honored to come this evening to present the city of Maricopa an appreciation certificate, as well as a flag that was flown while the wall was here. What an amazing week we had. We had over 300 motorcycles that escorted the wall from Eloy to Casa Grande. We were the second stop, Penalt County was the second stop. I'll probably cry while I'm talking to you guys, okay? It was the second stop for this wall that travels across the United States. It brought together veteran and non-veteran groups from across the county. We had little over 1,000 people from Eloy to Casa Grande as that wall and the escorts traveled through the communities. The Purple Heart Vietnam Veterans led on the bikes, as well as all of the other Vietnam vets and other veterans. We had 1,410 youth, middle school and high school students set toward the wall while it was here, 200 volunteers that were there. We were there 24 hours a day while it was open, 30 sponsors, and over 9,000 visitors that came through the four days to visit and experience the wall. And what I wanted to share with you tonight are, several things were left at the wall, my hands are shaking, several things were left at the wall, and they will be on display at the Penalt County Veterans Center Eagles Landing, and I wanted to share one from a youth and one from a Vietnam veteran. "Dear Joe, I got an etching of your name while on the field trip yesterday. I didn't think to leave anything, so I had someone bring you a flower. You'll always be remembered by me. Thank you so, so much for your service. All peace and love." She's 17 years old, that left this, had this taken the next day. This was the first thing that was left at the wall on Thursday, and I'd like to read a piece on the bottom. "Dear Eddie, my high school friend, comrade in arms and an American hero, Kathy remarried and I'm told has a beautiful family. I miss you and wish you had come home with me. I know God has taken good care of you. It won't be too many more years and we will meet again. This wall has kept your memory alive for me these past 52 years." So, I, there's so many more things that were left, and so many more stories, but thank you for being a sponsor and helping us raise the money that we needed to bring this wall into the county. So, if you guys could please come down and accept this flag. Mr. Paul Leonard is from the city of Maricopa, and he was a city of Maricopa representative on our team.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Kim and Paul, thank you. Barry McCann.
Good evening, Mayor Price and the city council. Before I begin, thank you, Kim, for doing that. I thought that you got to see my friends that I watched die. It means a lot. We learn from history. I deny history. I've learned that. And I'm here because I've been coming to the city of Phoenix since before I come up. But yeah, I got drafted out of Channel High. My career started with a race rider in the United States, David. I watched Samir Sadat assassinated before me, and at the end of my career, I was in charge of 37 at 14, the maintenance of the 325 people. I'm blessed. But I'm here because I care about Maricopa, this is my home. I built a home here, and I'm thankful for what Mayor Price has done, the water that Councilman Brown does, Councilman Smith, and her husband and I've been transportation, and also Ms. Gussie. Thank you for that. My cousin, the late US Senator John S. McCain III, both agreed with us, we must save a country rather than a party. And we have to have spirited discourse amongst our children, so they can learn from things that we've, when I make history, other people aren't talking about history. But I thank this city of council for what they're doing, and I want us to work together. So, I'm here with 150, over 150 credit hours of college. I have a crypto security clearance to help us bring in $60 billion with a project to Penalt County, because people are jealous because we're actually doing this, you know, and they can't. So, I was here when I heard one of my city councilmen say, "He was smart." Well, being around certified geniuses and world leaders, including my family, I've never heard such a thing. As far as I'm concerned, that's why I'm here, to give you all the benefits, why I speak, every city council, every water supervisor, Arizona Corporation of Mission, between Phoenix and Tucson, talk everywhere, and decide, because I'm here, I'm as a vet. I'm also registered lobbyist for Arizona Veterans with Disabilities. I'm thankful for that. And Kim, I try not to break up, but it means a lot. So, I'm here for you, thank you.
Thank you, Barry, appreciate it. And the last speaker card, the last speaker card I have is Judith Lane.
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Wade, city council members, officials, neighbors. This is yet another time I've had the privilege to address the body of the city council. Starting way back in 2013 was my first occasion to stand up here with my knees shaking and talk on behalf of the arts in Maricopa. The arts may seem somewhat to the side of most people's experience, but they are as essential to life as anything else. They bypass words, and in some cases bypass pictures, when talking about the actual voice of the muses, music, and it strikes us right in the center of our emotions. Music uplifts, it astounds, it cools us and pacifies us with its beauties, and it mystifies us with its constellation of eight-tonal, what is that? It can be all of those things, and then again, something else. And I'm here specifically to talk about a musical event coming to Maricopa on April 6th, the evening of Saturday, April 6th, at the Agriculture Center. It's going to be the most important concert ever put on in this city. It is Maricopa Music Circle's end of its 11th year in operation, presenting only masterworks of music, including two of the greatest collections of music this world has ever been, had bestowed upon by both Guyanese Mozart and by Maudes Mazorski. The anchors of the first and second half of the program are a suite from Mozart's operas introduced by the complete overture from Cosi van Tute, and in the second half, the complete pictures and exhibition, one of Mazorski's three greatest works, along with his opera Boris Ludnov and Nyon Bald Mountain, which everybody knows from Walt Disney's Fantasia, the one with the creepy bat at the end, devil circling the mountain as it goes to sleep again. Well, Mazorski's a master of bringing us creepy, ecstatic, humorous music, and every piece on this program is astounding visually visual. We will have projections for every work, and indeed, because the orchestra aligns itself with all the arts in this city, our handbill for the event is based upon a work by a Maricopa painting, a painting I actually have in my studio. We invite everybody on April 6th, $15 admission at the door. Please come, there's a reception, and it's going to be beyond great. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith, appreciate it. Anyone else like to approach the podium for call to the public at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public and move on. That'll take us to item 7.1, which is the approval of the minutes. Council, can I have a motion to approve, please? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to consent agenda, as nothing was pulled from consent. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second. Any further discussion on consent? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to item 9.1, which is the regular city council meeting agenda. This is the mayor's city council shall hear public comment regarding a request to abandon the public right-of-way. This is segments of Papago Street and McDavid Road, and portion of the town site of Maricopa resubdivision, Maricopa-Penalt County, Arizona, containing approximately .31 acres, in exchange for a newly defined public access easement in the same general vicinity. So, with that, are you taking it? Go for it. Explain away. Josh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is for a portion of Maricopa Road and Papago Road that terminates at the Union Pacific Railroad, is no longer utilized for public access. This is the second time council has had the opportunity to hear this particular item, but what's, we're bringing this forward now for approval for the exchange of fair market value for a piece of land that would be an easement, could be utilized for future enhancement of the city's trail network.
Perfect. Any questions on this item, council? Pretty straightforward, with that, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second? Motion is seconded. Any further? Say that again? Sorry, I didn't read the hand signals well, my apologies.
Can you close the public hearing before taking the action?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize this was a public hearing, my apologies. I'm kind of reading off the wrong agenda up here, so I'm doing two things at once, so my apologies. Yeah, so if there's, is there any comment from the audience on the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And so, this is, this is not for discussion and action, so we don't have to have a motion or second on this, right?
Yeah.
That's the second one, okay. So, at this point, we've reached the same thing. On item 9.2, this is the resolution, so this is the one. So, can we go back and redo the motion on this? Is there, there's a motion?
So moved.
And there's a second. Is there any further discussion on this? My apologies for that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. So, that'll take us to item 9.3, which the mayor's city council has discussed, possibly take action on making appointments to the various committees whose terms are expired or are vacant. This is for discussion and action. Council, as we talked in our strategic planning retreat, there are potential changes on the horizon, but it requires council to have that discussion. We have not reached that point yet, and so the consensus at that meeting was to continue on as regular at this time, until we decide to take action or not take action on a different course here. And so, with that, we will move forward as though we are continuing the regular course of action. Therefore, in front of you, you should have your potential appointments, if you so choose to do so at this time. We'll go through committee by committee, and so we'll start with age-friendly, and the first person I think we'll go to is Councilmember Gussie. Are you prepared at this time to make an appointment to that committee?
Yes, if Ms. Elizabeth Howell would stand up, please, just to be recognized. I had had a couple of conversations with her, and she's very excited to serve, so I'd like my appointment to be Ms. Elizabeth Howell for the age-friendly.
Thank you very much. That'll take us to Councilmember Manfredi, and we'll approve these as a slate, if that's okay by you, council.
I haven't had a chance to speak with my person yet, so I'm going to wait.
Okay, so Councilmember is waiting. Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Wade.
I plan, excuse me, I plan no change to the age-friendly at this time.
Okay, so you're reappointing.
Reappointing.
Mr. Andy Lockridge.
That's correct.
Okay, so reappoint there. And Councilmember Videla.
I'm reappointing Colleen Storm.
Colleen Storm. Perfect. Okay, I think we'll, well, should we, we'll go through and do- Okay, I think we'll, well, we'll go through and do these now. Is there any, is there a motion on, because we can, we can do these separate, right? Or do we have to do this all at once? Let's do them separate, just to keep them clean. So can I have a motion to approve, then?
Some move.
Second.
Second, is there any further discussion on the appointments here on for age-friendly? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so we'll move on then to Board of Adjustments. The three that I have on here that potentially need reappointment or change is Councilmember Manfredi.
Yeah, I'm going to leave Dean on there for now.
Okay, so Mr. Dean Devault, Mr. Videla.
I'll reappoint Greg Campbell.
Greg Campbell, okay. And Vice Mayor Wade.
I'll reappoint Chance Love.
Reappointing Mr. Chance Love, okay. With that, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Some move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move to the Heritage District at this time. Councilmember Gussi.
Yes, I'd like Stacy, if you wouldn't mind standing up. I had had a couple of conversations with Stacy Vaninsdale as an appointment for the Heritage District. She has a local business that operates in the Heritage District.
Perfect. Stacy Vaninsdale, thank you very much. Mr. Manfredi.
I'm currently leaving it vacant for now.
Okay, so we'll wait on that one. Okay. Let's see, Vice Mayor Wade.
I'll be reappointing Terrence Vaias.
Terrence, okay. And let's see, Councilmember Videla.
I'll be nominating Lucia Rodriguez.
Lucia Rodriguez, perfect. Okay. Any further discussion on those appointments? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Arts Committee. Let's see, Councilmember Smith. Start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be nominating Susan Cameron.
Susan Cameron. Thank you. Vice Mayor Wade.
I couldn't remember her name until she got up to the podium. No, I'm teasing her. Actually, I'm re-nominating Shelley Gillespie.
Shelley Gillespie, all right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Manfredi.
I haven't had a chance to speak with Angela, so I'm going to leave it vacant for now.
Okay, we'll wait on that. And then Councilmember Videla.
We reappoint Cynthia Portre.
Cynthia Portre, perfect. Excellent. I believe that's all I have on those ones, so, yes, Councilmember Gussi.
Mayor, I do have a placement, Mr. Matt Ortega.
Matt Ortega.
Has submitted his resignation, and I'd like Ms. Antonia, may please stand also just to be recognized.
Antonia, perfect.
I'd like to appoint Antonia President.
Thank you for catching that, Councilmember. Sorry, I'm going off my highlights here, and I didn't have that one. My apologies. And again, if I missed something, please just, please just stop me. Excellent. We have, have a motion? Have a motion on this one? Have a motion and there's a second. Is there any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you again. Onto the PRL at this time. We'll start with myself. I'm in talks with someone right now, and so I will appoint probably at the next meeting. So I'll wait at this time. Let's see, Councilmember Videla.
Yes, I will be nominating Kevin McDillo, who's been a member of, resident here in Maricopa for 12 years, very good friend, very good advocate for, good friend of mine, he's even had a softball tournament before. He's got a wife who is Vanessa, who's got a great state farm here. She just took it over, and I'm very happy to be nominating him and his whole family, actually. But Kevin McDillo, please stand up. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Vice Mayor Wade.
I'll be reappointing Christina Tina Dugan.
Perfect. Repointing Ms. Dugan. Mr. Manfredi.
Yeah, when I asked someone to apply for this, and I was kind of surprised that he said yes, because he works full-time, he has a full-time job working with literally, not really a job, but a passion. So the person I'm nominating is Michael Collins to PRL.
Michael Collins, perfect. Okay, I believe that concludes.
And he is in the audience, so you can stand up and be recognized.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else on this that I've missed? If not, can I have a motion, please? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. P&Z, so at this time, I have Vice Mayor Wade.
I'll be reappointing Linda Huggins, Huggins Chair of that P&Z.
Okay, so reappointing Ms. Huggins. Mr. Manfredi.
I'll reappoint Joshua Bab.
Reappointing Mr. Bab. And Mr. Videla.
I'll be reappointing Dan Frank, he's here in the audience, please stand.
Excellent. Dan?
Oh, there he is.
Thank you very much. Okay, if I haven't missed anyone there, can I have a motion, please? Motion, is there a second? Thank you, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And let's see, two more to go here. Let's see, Mr. Manfredi, we'll start with Transportation Advisory Committee.
I'm going to leave it blank, vacant for now.
Okay, so we're going to wait. All right, Vice Mayor Wade.
I'm going to reappoint Roger Gillespie as well.
Okay. And Mr. Videla.
I'll be reappointing Brian Hoffman.
Brian Hoffman. Okay, if there's nothing else there, then can I have a motion, please? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And cultural affairs, last but not least, we'll start with, let's see here, who am I missing? Let's start with Councilmember Wade, or Vice Mayor Wade, sorry.
I'll be reappointing Amara Bet.
Amara Bet.
Chair.
Perfect. Mr. Manfredi.
Reappointing Amanda Evans-Clark.
Amanda Evans-Clark. Mr. Videla.
I'll be reappointing Javier Monta, I'm going to say his name wrong, Montacada.
Montada.
I got it, right? He's been in the city for about 12 years. He's a dentist. He's got a wonderful wife and two children, and I've known him for about six or seven years, so Javier, please stand.
Wonderful, thank you. And Ms. Gussi.
There is no change.
Okay. Antonia, got it.
Ms. Janice Videla.
Janice Videla, okay. Videla. Sorry. I have all kinds of things wrong, so Videla, got it. I'm not sure where I have this other one on here, so it's been one of those days. My apologies. Okay, with that, can I have a motion, please?
Motion, choose accepted slate.
Okay, motion, is there a second? Okay, this is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
I was just catching, Councilmember Brown doesn't have.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, that's who was missing.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It's a little tricky with the ins and outs on this one. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and I'm going to call it again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. To all those who have served, who have signed up to serve, and who have accepted nominations tonight, thank you very much for willingness to serve.
Absolutely.
We really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
For PRL, your first meeting's tomorrow night. Have fun.
And that takes us to item 9.4 on the city council agenda. City council, this is a cleanup ordinance issue. It had it to be on the city council website for 60 days, and I think we kind of missed it at the last meeting from an ordinance perspective. We approved all this stuff at the last meeting, but we didn't do the ordinance portion of it. So this is a housekeeping issue on the committees that we changed and rearranged last time. So with that, can I have a motion to approve the ordinance, please?
Some move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. So with that, we'll move to a roll call vote on this particular issue.
It wasn't ready. Councilmember Smith?
Prove.
Councilmember Videla?
Prove.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Perfect. Well, that concludes the agenda for this evening. Thank you very much for sticking through it with us, and we will see you here in a couple of weeks. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. See you in a couple of weeks. This is great.[1790.74]